Okay, there are twenty-three multiple choice, so the answers are there. So ten definitions, twenty-three multiple choice, and three essays. And the essays are interesting because I give you like four under each heading. You can pick whichever one you wanna write to. So like in section two, there'll be four essays, you pick the one that you wanna write to. So you gotta eliminate the ones. And I'll just tell you this much about the essays. The first group is on Greek education, some facet of the Greeks. And what do you think the second section's on?
Rome.
Right, it's on the Roman education, so it's on that era. And then the third essay is, and I'm just gonna say, I'll give you this much to it. Again, those who aren't here, they lose out. If they ask you, you can tell them. It's not like you're cheating on them, right? Is on why you're writing on personal philosophy. That's a hint. Why are you writing personal philosophy in this course? What's behind that? Why? Now, there's a, I'm gonna ask you a specific question to answer, but it's on that whole topic of personal philosophy. Okay? Then, at the very end, if you choose to do it, you don't have to. There's an extra five point, extra credit. I always put that in just because some kids like to do it, and they just keep s- You know, if you wanna do it, it's up to you. And I will say this to all of you. I'm not gonna get here at five, 'cause I've been here many a morning at five, and I sit by myself. So, I'll be here at six, if anybody wants to start at six, I'll be here. And I'll sit here through the end of the period. And if we need to have everybody move upstairs, you're gonna need more time after, you can do that. Okay? Now, if you have class, you gotta gear. I mean, if you got a class right after, you gotta be in. So I mean, you might wanna come in a few minutes early, if you wanna get started on it. But if you don't have class, and you just wanna work on it, I don't have any problem sitting upstairs. You can move right upstairs in your computers, plug in, and finish, and then send it to me. I'll be there. I'll be up there waiting for it, 'cause when you, after your class is done, I've just sent the test form to you all. And you should have it on your desktop, and once you, it's, it's, remember, I canceled the first one. I don't know what the heck, it just sent out, and so it's new. I sent the new edition of it this afternoon, just before I came here. When you're all done with the test, you're gonna say, I sent it to you, and I just checked to see if it's there. If it's there, then you can go. You're on your way. Okay? You'll type it all. You'll write your name. That'd be not good. So, let me explain a little bit about the definitions. So you're gonna see a word. And let's practice this once for a second. I'll come up with a word that's not on the test. Each definition is worth two points. Okay? And so, you get two points for writing down definitions, you probably should write down two aspects of this term. So if I said something like this. Um, what's the word I wanna use? Uh, okay, um, well, I don't know, maybe that's not good. Give me a second. Let me produce some words. If I were to use, um, Hebrews. Okay, let's just say the word Hebrews. We talked about Hebrews, they were ancient people, right? So how could you come up with two different points? That you can help in defining what that is in a set, in a couple sentences? So, can you think of something you could put down? Hebrews, go ahead, give me one.
You could talk about, um, like how it's monotheistic.
Okay, so it's a group of ancient people that were monotheistic, monotheistic in their beliefs. That's one. So I can't, I give you credit for that, alright? Now, is there another one that you can come up with? Go ahead.
Hebrews, like when they were-
Okay, who were people who were enslaved by the Egyptians. Give me a second. Okay? Um, so, when we say two points, you gotta come up with two things to tell me about what they are, or what they're saying, what this term is, okay? So let me stop there for a second. Any questions on what I've just said? I've kinda given you the definitions, multiple choice. And can I ask you, just as I'm giving a hint, I don't know how you all figure out. I mean, some kids hate multiple choice. Some kids love it, because the answer's right there in front of you. How do you go about determining? And I think it's, even if you're seniors in college, and just think about this with your own students. Um, how do you determine on a, on a multiple choice test question? What do you do first? When you read through all of them? I mean, do you just read through them and quickly grab one, and stand out? Or what do you do, Katie?
Well, I usually eliminate the one that doesn't make sense at all.
Okay, that's, that's the clue. Get rid of the ones right away across, you could write all over the test by the way. You write all over it, but just cross off what you know for sure that it's not. And then make, then you'll pare it down to maybe two. And if you're not sure on those two, at least you got a fifty-fifty shot, right? So just use those good test-taking skills. You'll know what you're doing. This is a good group for you guys to check it out. But you can write all over the test as much as you like. You can take notes. Sometimes students I've seen that have really worked in this class is that they look at the essays right away, because that's the part that they're concerned about. And they start jotting down all the things they wanna remember, whatever essay they're gonna choose. But you only write on one, not on all, okay? And I'm not gonna, I'm gonna tell you straight up, I really was hoping there'd be a few more kids here today. And maybe they're already still gonna have some show up. But the one thing I will not do is, I'm not gonna put in, um, a bunch of stuff on the history of Rome, the empire. I mean, that's not education, but looking at only through the lens of education. Okay? So it's gonna be really prominently whatever it is that we're going to promote, yeah, as it lays out with education, okay? That should make it pretty straightforward. So here's what I'm gonna try to do this afternoon. I'm not gonna go through all my PowerPoint slides, I'm kidding. That'd be crazy. But I'm gonna give you a couple hints of something you can and should. I spent a lot of time this summer writing. Remember these sheets that I gave you, you had those five questions, right? Okay, so I kinda went through it, I read the book. I've read, I've used this book for seventeen years, though this is the first year of this edition. And it's really quite simple compared to what the old book was. You can be thankful you're not taking the old book. But I wrote up a summary, and those are really good. If I, if I had any, I mean, I wouldn't go back and reread your book. Are you kidding? There's a lot of information. If you haven't done that already, that's on you, not on me. But I would definitely say, reread these sheets carefully. You know, again, Professor Holman puts a lot of things in bold, because those are the most important things. And I do that in PowerPoint. So, go ahead and, you know, read through them, make sure you understand what those words are in bold, whatever. Okay? Um, and then look at the questions that I stuck down, because some of those questions, maybe one of the questions that I gave you might appear on the test. That's why I had to do it. Okay? I'll send out a reminder probably tomorrow, and I know you guys get really tired about my little notes that I sent you. But I just feel like I wanna be really honest and transparent with you, because I want you all to get your corrective points. So when you turn in your test, when you bring your test, and you pick it up, and get it that, I mean, that morning, have your study guides put together, your reading guides, I should say, stapled in order with your name on the front, so I can just, okay, I'm gonna give you credit for this. And has anybody ever told you, you can do these together? I don't care if the whole class got together, you know, and you all have the same answer. It's that you're trying to talk through it, and you're discussing it a little bit. It's up to you. Have some of you done that with others, and you gotta get to, that's a good thing, it's a really good study tip. When I was in grad school, I'd get together with guys, I was at grad school, and a couple of gals that were just awesome. They would take so many questions, I would take so many questions, we just all shared that information, rather than all of us having to read these textbooks that were right over our heads. Okay? Any questions on what I've said so far? I mean, clear as mud, or are we good? Alright, you got that information. So, what I'm gonna try to do is, I'm gonna give you some hints. While I'm not gonna tell you what's on the test, that would not be good. But I will share with you some hints of terms. Definitely on this very first section of the introduction to education is, you've got to be able to talk about the difference between what two terms?
Education and school.
Yes, raising. Education and schooling. Oh, did you say it? I'm sorry, I thought, I saw your lips move. Sorry. Okay, someone's getting a drink, I just heard the faucet, it's like, no one came in here, this is scary if I'm done. Because we're not supposed to be in here. I broke in. So if anybody says, when were you in the library at five o'clock, you say, Professor Holman brought us in. And, but blame me, I didn't even ask Jimmy for permission. Alright, yeah, we did have a funny session tonight, but I did call security, you know the like. So, education and schooling, make sure you know that. Make sure you know every aspect of that. Yes.
I'm going off of that, like one of the terms on the study guide was like informal versus formal schooling?
Same thing, right, informal and formal. What would you say, what is formal education? Of those two terms, which one would be more formal?
Like the schooling.
Schooling would, right, it takes place in a place. Exactly informal or formal? Formal is a place, school, right? So you should know those.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't know. Let me see, hold on, let me see. Yeah, 'cause it said, it said informal versus formal schooling, like not education, but schooling.
Okay, Katie, I, I was gonna tell you straight up, just look at it as formal and versus informally, schooling versus education. Because I can tell you right now, there's gonna be a question on that, and it'll, it'll, it'll maybe rear its head a few times. Because that's kind of the introduction. We're studying, are we studying to be educators in an informal or formal setting? Well, we're looking very much at a formal place. We're not gonna do that, right? Now, a couple things I would throw back at you, and I'm not, so, we're not gonna, I, you can memorize that, but I prefer that you put it all in your own terms, whatever your definition, because put it in your words. Figure that all out. Not gonna spend a lot of time with, that diagram really kinda shows you, that can even help you define it, if you live with that diagram, right? It really does, because there's a lot of schooling that takes place across everything we do. We get a lot of experiences in schooling. But here's the one thing, I'm not gonna, I, I want you to, what does enculturation mean? Remember? Enculturation, who exactly uses that term? We're gonna say, the purpose of schooling, very formal education, is to enculturate our kids. What does that mean? Go ahead.
Teach them like the values and traditions and just kinda methods.
Alright, so you're gonna be introducing them to what it means, in this case, in our country, what it is to be in America. Right? And, and you're gonna learn a little history, you're gonna learn government, you're gonna learn math. What's acceptable in our culture, has that become, and let me just ask you, has that become more and more difficult today? Ah, right? And no matter where you teach, you, depends on, right, where you're teaching, um, about whether or not they're gonna have the same feelings about enculturation as you are. That's what enculturation means, it means bringing them in. And anytime you have questions, don't be afraid to ask those questions. Who type, uses that as a premise, that everything we do in schooling, really encultrates our kids. Okay, here's one thing I do want you to make sure, make sure you know the four branches of philosophy. Metaphysics, epistemology, logic, and axiology. You should make sure you know what those words mean philosophically. Because a couple of them are actually building our philosophy, how do kids learn, how do they know, right? And the like, so what is real is metaphysics, so just take a look at those, make sure you look them over. And there's really not much more. I'm not gonna quest, I'm not gonna quiz you on the questions. I can do that. You're gonna be writing a whole lot for me, but I just want that question. Okay? So for this first section, that's, there's some really good definitions here, I've given them to you, you've talked to them about what philosophy is. This could be a help. Remember I said we have thirty-one essay on personal philosophy, there's something to that to do, so maybe start this one. That might be a little bit to look at. Um, but, you know, why, why are you, why are you going to be forced to write a, a senior philosophy? Because first is by law, you have to. All educators must. But there might be some hints here that can help you. And, um, I'm not gonna ask you this in the question, but considering the personal philosophy. Okay, the negative factor of the actual philosophy, we're not gonna judge it. So that's all I'm really talking to you about through this first section, and this first class. Is there, are there any questions on this? Anything that you need to have explained? Do all of you have that sheet that I gave you, that review sheet that had all the terms and all that? That would be a good thing to have up there. When you see words from this section, go ahead and circle it, you know what I'm talking about, you know, those are probably gonna be important things to have. Okay, let's go on to the next one. I'm gonna push it. This document, I'm gonna bring up the next chapter, which is on these early civilizations. Now, I have to be honest, this is the first time I've ever, um, I've ever used this section on test. I am not going to go through a whole lot of it, but I would suggest that you would think about this. I'm not gonna ask you about the Paleolithic period, anything like that. But one thing I would ask you, after you've studied over and read this sheet, which has a lot of the pertinent information that needs to be done. But there may be certain, like if I said cuneiform, who would that be attached to? The cuneiform, the early form of writing from, anybody remember?
Sumerians.
Sumerians, right? So there might be a real simple question like that, that you just recall, because it's in Dark Time, it's there, it's important. And how would we describe this early education? Formal or informal? In early Sumerian, would it be formal or informal?
Informal.
Okay, I get it, you're right, but what do you mean by that, Katie?
It was like from the parents or the elders in their community.
Okay, so there were skills that were teaching, right? But eventually, we started seeing some more formal things that will take place in it, but not in a place called school yet. I'm not gonna think of formal education, I'm thinking of school, with teachers like you. Okay? So I, I'm not really delving into this a lot, because I just think that, um, you've got enough history here in WLC, and there's some interesting things that can be brought up and talked about. But, um, you know, there may be a few simple things that were so very obvious, that when you look at it, you'll have no problem. But I would tell you, very carefully, make sure that you read that summary sheet that I gave you of the, and look at your questions. Look at your questions that I shared with you. Uh, those five study guide questions. If you've got them, that's why I don't wanna collect those until after the test, I mean, if you come in to take the test, you should look them over a little bit before the test. Okay? Questions on that, there's not a lot on that chapter, I'm just not gonna burden you with that. I really wanna get into the section that still has an effect on us today, and that's the Greeks and the Romans. Questions on that particular section? Anything that strikes you as interesting, or, oh, I'm not sure? So, one of the questions that you had in the back on this chapter, I'm just gonna, I'm just turning to it right now quickly. It says, reflect on this concept of survival skills in early educational history. When you think about survival skills, do the ancient people, was it all about surviving and learning how to do certain things, they could survive, right? First, they started out being hunters, and then they moved to become, after hunters, they became gatherers, farmers, right? They had to learn to survive, and that's what they wanted to pass on to their young. That was very informal. It was a matter of survival, whether they could do it or not, and everybody had to learn how to do it, right? Absolutely. Women, girls, had to learn how to do certain things with gardening and the like. Men would go out and, uh, hunt. They, and teach their sons how to hunt and the like, but that was for survival, survival alone. So, not a lot on that first section. Okay, if you don't have any questions, we keep moving. You guys can ask anything you want, I can always tell you, no, I'm not gonna talk about that, but I, I will help you with whatever you need. Alright, Greece. Well, we talked about a couple of minutes, and you, what, what words do you think are definitely gonna play in to, uh, to this particular, uh, section? Is there one that really, is there one that will really probably play out a term that you think of in Greece? Katie?
Okay.
Okay, arete, of course, yes, what's that mean? Katie? Arete is what? Excellence, right? Now, there's a reason for excellence, right, and I'm just gonna share this with you. Um, whose writings did every Greeks, person, whether it was Athens or Greece, or festival Nike, or wherever, that that the Greeks really revered, and felt like, we gotta live up to, and that was whom? Homer, right? The writings of Homer, his epics. And in the beginning, it was an oral history of the time, as the Greeks developed their own language and their script, they began to share that with young boys, and they saw how people were behaving, right? So I would tell you honestly, this will be a big thing, Homer will play a part on this test. So you might wanna jump, gently put that word down. Go ahead.
Um, are we gonna use all of the four goals of the formal education?
Yes. Yeah, that would help you fill out some of the answers, right. I need you some specific things, and your textbook, here's where they're found, right? So what was, what was the purpose of using his goal, or using his epics in, in education in ancient Greece? Uh, another term that I think you should make sure you know is a polis, right? That's how, that was an administrative unit, how the Greeks organized themselves. Probably the biggest takeaway from this chapter is, we looked at two of the policies, and they were, what was the first one? Athens, and the second one was? Sparta. Could you? Could we sit down and share everything that we know about both those, and how they're so diametrically opposed to each other? Why can't you are so diametrically opposed? Sparta and Athens were completely different, but they had two purposes. And they didn't necessarily invite people. They didn't necessarily invite people into, ma'am? Ma'am? Can you go, can you step just asking, come in and judge quickly, 'cause you're not supposed to be in here, the library's not open yet. Who is that, do you know?
I've seen them, there's students.
Yeah, they just keep coming, walking in the building right now. Just give me a second, I'll have a competition.
Yeah, we're leaving, sorry.
Hey, you guys, I'd love to have you come sit in here and study with us. But, yeah, the library's not open yet, it opens at six, but we're just, because we're doing a study session for a test.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Hey, thank you. God bless. Alright, so, definitely, this is gonna be a big part of this test, it's going to be on Athens and Sparta, being able to distinguish what made one so prolifically, the way they turned out. And anything you can share, you should really vote up on that, understand? And the same with Athens. If, if you could pick a polis, which one would you, would you prefer to have joined? Athens? Athens? Yeah, 'cause we're, who had, the girls didn't have no rights, and there's no guys. But, but yeah, Sparta, you got a better chance, all you had to do basically was just to convince kids, right? So we went through a lot with that, we gave you lots of information, but it would be really, really important that you look at those and understand. Uh, look over every facet, you can't avoid those two, uh, policies, really, really important. And again, read your study guide, that would be important. Uh, let me look at my notes one more time, I can just pull these back real quickly and see. Uh, I'm glad Katie said arete, that's awesome, right? By the way, in both policies, were they, was it informal education or formal education? I think it's back in the time, and we go back through this time of, of these policies. Yes, it did. But in the beginning, from where you started seeing it, it was just very important, it was just by participating, being a part of who you were. And it was intended for whom? Boys. And here's the part, you can probably nail it, if you do, make sure you write and think about what you learned on the way. What, what did girls get? What did they receive? In their education, what was their education like, even though the boys were getting, you know, a different, uh, form of education, informal in Sparta, and different in Athens? They'd tell me how it looked, and how did they gain it, right? What was the value of all those things that they attempted to do? Um, okay, a couple other things, I wanna make sure that I got everything on that I wanna talk. This is one, a student do very well on that, on this portion of the test. By the way, I actually have a slide, right, on the role of women in education, so you can, you are fortunate, 'cause the rest of them are not hearing this, but I'm telling you, you can use that, look at that, and take that to your memory. Okay? That is the introduction to Greek, Greek, um, the policies, Greek education. Um, I really want you to stress though, the terms that you've raised, that I heard a couple of them said already, and so, don't, you know, try to explain yourself as best you can, um, especially in essays, but just think, who was one of the greatest influencers, um, when it comes to writings in ancient Greek, uh, education? Homer, no doubt. His writings, and by the way, what was, what were his writings called? What was his most famous books? Lauders and later. The Iliad and the Odyssey. And who was, uh, who were they fighting against, remember? What people? Was another polis? Troy. They were fighting the Trojans. And so, you know, he wrote these stories, these valiant war, these valiant leaders, these valiant, uh, soldiers, and that's what you're supposed to look up to. Guys that were honest individuals, who would give their life, who were honest, victorious, and valued things that, those are the values that we would, we'd wanna look up to and emulate. Um, can I just ask, taking aside from this right now, do you think schools still teach that type of thinking? When we think about, you know, valiant, uh, individuals, uh, that are good people, that you're honest, that you're, is that the purpose? I mean, do you think, will you be that type of teacher, that you'll try to impress it on your kids? I hope you are. Rather than trying to impress upon kids the schmucks in society, right? You wanna talk about the things that are really, really most important, and those you can look up to, right? We talked a little bit about that in class as well. Okay, any questions on that chapter? Does that make sense? Okay, now the next chapter's gonna be a little bit more intense, so let's just turn to that, if you can get your, one on the Greek theorists. So this is where we start looking at specific teachers, individuals that come out of Greece during this time of, in particular, um, that've come out of this time period in Athens and, and the like, and now we're going to turn to these great men. So the, who were the first teachers? You better know everything you can find out about these teachers, because they'll play a major role later on. Uh, Kayla, can you tell me who was that first group of intenderant teachers that were paid?
Um, Sophus.
The Sophus. And we had some names given, and we should probably know some of the names of the Sophus. Okay, I, I would tell you that, um, there's a, there's a couple of slides that I gave you, that definitely, I, I, um, I gave them to you, and I said, proceed, um, don't be afraid to, to use these guys, know who they are. But let me tell you, what brought on the Sophus? Okay, so I'm just gonna ask that question of all of you, just so if you're listening to each other talk. What brought the Sophus to become very popular with many people? What happened? That they thought, you know what, I can, I can do that, I can teach kids that, I can teach them in this? Whether they could or not. Go ahead, reel out.
Didn't they believe that, like, you should be, you should want to get educated in something you actually do, because they didn't want, like, just like, the society?
That's true, that is, that really came out of sophism, right? But what pushed the Sophus into thinking, hey, you feel, this, the, these policies used to be, we're all, we're all together here, and we're all for the common good. Let's just say, we were, let's say each group of tables, we're all, we're all here trying to work together for the common good. And along comes, something happened in Greece that began to broaden their horizons, and do you know what that was? What happened? What did the Greeks start setting up? Across from, in the Aegean Sea, over where modern Turkey is today, trading posts, right? And they started making some money, and they began to develop some wealth, then suddenly, this idea that we're all in this together in our polis, they started getting individuals who said, you know what, I'm all about getting wealth and, and having more. And, uh, as you can well imagine, Sophus were somewhat scorned, because they kinda destroyed the status quo. How would you feel about someone, let me just, hold on for a second, how would you feel? If you had, uh, you built a real family environment in your classroom, that we're all in this together, we're all gonna support one another, and along comes a kid who's gonna be the spoiler, is constantly stirring up the class? As a teacher, how might you feel about that, stupid? Okay, you know, in Roman times, I went, I guess that maybe they'd lop their heads off. But, uh, yeah, you'd be just, you might be a little disturbed for them, because what the heck? We're trying to, we're family here, this is how we, this is how we behave in our classroom. I trust all of you, you know, um, I'll give you a personal example. About five years ago, I had a very large class in this class, and I trusted my students, I trust my students. I just trust all of you. There's not one, as I've told you, I would love to have any of you teach my, my grandkids. And I trusted kids, and a kid pulled the trust out for me so quickly, he cheated. Now, do kids cheat? That happens. Was I disappointed? Yeah. Did I have to talk to him? You better believe I talked to him. But it was so disappointing, because I felt that we had built this camaraderie amongst ourselves. Just like a polis. We were all in this together, and now comes along someone who experiences something different than most, and they say, gosh, I like having money, I like having wealth. I am better than you, because I have money and wealth, and I wanna have more influence in this polis. And along comes the teacher, I can teach you how to become more influential, right? Do you remember what we sometimes called those Sophus? There was a name, a nickname, we called them the image? Image makers, right? They could say, I'll make you do whatever you wanna be. And so fathers would invest and pay.